All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 4, 2022 County Commissioner Meeting of Cleveland County. It's 6:00 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we have a quorum.
At this time, we'll begin with our pledge of allegiance and invocation. Is anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and lead the invocation and the pledge? All right, if not, I'll ask Commissioner Bridges to lead us in that.
Stand, please. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Well, Jesus, we just thank you for this day, the many blessings you've given to us, Father. Lord, we pray for our country. We're in need of a lot of prayer, Lord. People in Florida having a lot of heartbreak this week. Father, we just pray that we'd be able to help them in any way possible and that you would give them comfort. Pray for the law enforcement and the soldiers around the world that are keeping us safe. We just pray that you would help them, Father. Lord, as we look to tonight, we just pray that as we look to the county's business, anything said and done would be within your will. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next, I'll recognize any elected officials we have present tonight. All right, seeing none, next we'll recognize any veterans in attendance. Sir, could you guys stand and give us your branch of service?
Richard Hooker, U.S. Army.
Thank you.
We have veterans pins. A rocker has got the county seal with a rocker on the bottom that says veterans. Do you guys have one of those already?
Do either of you have one?
They both have one.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your service. Next, we'll recognize any law enforcement in attendance.
Dan Hatt, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, gentlemen. And next, we'll recognize county department hands in attendance.
Chris Martin, county office.
Martha Thompson, legal. Carrie Melton, Assistant County Manager.
Allison Moon, Human Resources. Katie Swanson, Social Service, please.
I'm glad we're in there.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for what you do for the county on a daily basis. Next item on the agenda is a motion to adopt the proposed agenda. Are there any items that need to be added to the agenda? If not, on the motion to approve the agenda, ask for adjournment.
So moved.
I'll say it.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is special recognition. At this time, I'll recognize Mr. Richard Hooker. He's going to come forward and speak about MDA Week, which is the Minority Enterprise Development Week of 2022. Mr. Hooker?
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners. My name is Richard Hooker, 1520 King off the court here in Shelby, North Carolina, and thank you for this opportunity. For the past 39 years, this community, along with other communities and organizations across the state, have used this occasion to celebrate and recognize and acknowledge the value and the significance of its important segment of our community. And that is why we observe Minority Enterprise Development Week, to observe and celebrate those contributions, accomplishments that minority business enterprises have contributed to our economy, both locally and nationally. In 1992, the Cleveland County Business Development Center was organized in Cleveland County to champion minority business enterprises. And it was a collaborative effort. It was a collaborative effort in that we had quite a few stakeholders to include Cleveland County, county commissioners, the city of Shelby, some of our banking institutions, and Cleveland Community College. It would be interesting to note, and I did a little research, that in 1992, when the Business Development Center was organized, and of course, I cite that because this is our 30th anniversary. So we want to use this occasion to celebrate our longevity and our, you know, presence in this community. But in 1992, when we started this organization with the support of the county commissioners, it was noted that, and I remember all five of them, who were county commissioners at that time? And I thought I'd just share that for just a little historical nostalgia. That included Joyce Casham, if you remember, some of you remember her, Jack Spangler, Joe Cabiness, Charlie Harry, still Miss Charlie, and Ralph Gilbert. I'm sure many of you may remember Ralph Gilbert, too. And for the past 30 years, the Cleveland County Business Development Center has played an active role in leadership development here in the county, education, youth outreach, and community engagement. So in keeping with our mission, which is to support entrepreneurship through capacity building, through education, and through networking, we would like to thank the county commissioners for your continued support and expression of your support for the Business Development Center, as well as the Minority Enterprise Development Week, which again is entering 39 years since it started in the Reagan administration in 1983. I also would like to recognize some of our board members. I don't see any board members, but we also have a leadership academy, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And I have a couple of members of our leadership academy, which is designed to equip and prepare future leaders in our community. We have Carol Hawke, and we have Chalita Wilson. And if I miss anyone, I apologize. No board members today, so we do have members of our leadership academy that are present. So with that, Mr. Chair, that concludes, you know, my presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do for the community. At this time, we're going to have the clerk read a proclamation for you guys.
Thank you.
Minority Enterprise Development Week 2022. Whereas Minority Enterprise Development Week is an annual celebration, excuse me, that has been historically proclaimed by the President of the United States since 1983 to highlight the important role and contributions minority business enterprises have made on our national and local economy. And whereas this year's theme, enduring 30 years of sustainability and legacy, reflects a historic milestone for the Cleveland County Business Development Center for its longevity and past achievements while moving forward to help foster greater community engagement, civic leadership, and building capacity within our community through education, collaboration, and strategic alliances. And whereas the annual observance of Minority Enterprise Development Week in Cleveland County will bring together small business owners, educators, faith-based leaders, and other community stakeholders to honor and celebrate the accomplishments of local entrepreneurs, business leaders, and other community partners who help make an invaluable difference in the community. And whereas the Cleveland County Business Development Center, in collaboration with the Cleveland Emerging Leaders Academy and other local sponsors, has teamed up to promote leadership development, business education, youth leadership, and women in business networks to help improve the quality of life for all citizens in Cleveland County. And whereas, the annual MedWeek celebration will also be highlighted by the recognition of Legacy Award recipients for their inspiring example of business longevity, noteworthy contributions in overcoming obstacles, and a fierce determination of self-sufficiency and building a legacy for the next generation. Now therefore, the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 23 through the 29, 2022, as Minority Enterprise Development Week in Cleveland County in recognition of the cooperative efforts of the above sponsoring organizations and individuals to enhance, promote, and support the success of minority-owned businesses and community partners. Adopted this the 4th day of October, 2022.
So we're going tall to small?
Right in here, right?
She's real tall.
Yeah.
There we go.
See everybody see?
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay, you're up.
Sorry.
Okay.
Are you sure it was good?
I think you're okay.
All right, next item on the agenda is citizen recognition. Madam Clerk?
No, it's on that one.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, Mr. Ripley.
Thank you, Commissioner Gordon. Several items for consideration. Item A, minutes from your September 20, 2022 regular commissioner meeting. Those minutes are in your packet for review and consideration. Item B is your monthly managers' report. That'll contain all lateral budget transfers for the last 30 days, as well as a few operational highlights. Happy to report that our CPA external audit by Thompson, Adams, as well on the time, and prepared to be submitted to the local government commission prior to the October 31 deadline. We also received the second of 18 installments of the National Opioid Settlement. And one other highlight that I think is worth mentioning is that back in the spring, we applied to the North Carolina PSAP, the State 911 Board, to help fund the new 911 facility that we'll be working on over the next 18 to 24 months, and received $5,36,595 in grant. We think that's about 75 to 80% of the total project budget. Item C for consideration is from the Planning Department. This is a request to set a public hearing for Tuesday, November 4. That will be case 2222, and it's a request to amend Section 12, 161 of the UDO. And that will be specific to separation standards and RV ordinances. Item D, from our legal department, this is a request to adopt the mandatory ARPA, which is the American Recovery Plan Act, retention records, and that'll help govern compliance for record retention, receipts, grant monitoring, and so forth with those dollars that we are responsible for. And finally, for consideration is item E, which is also from the legal department, which is the repeal of the licensing fee. As you're all aware, at your work session, you gave staff direction for that. We have the licensing program that's scheduled to become ordinance in January, and this will forego any cost share that would have been shared with the community. That concludes a fairly short consent agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, you've represented with the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? I do have one question before we call for the motion. On item C, the planning department case, is it case 22-27 or 22-22?
The base says 2227.
You said 22.
Yeah. It's 27, yeah, my policy.
So it's case 22-27?
Yeah, okay. All right. Thanks for that clarification.
So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
So moved.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, if you'll read the statement.
Yes, sir. After a public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments from the public are to be directed to the Board of Commissioners. There should be no comments made to other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the board chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the chair recognizes a speaker a second time for rebuttal of information brought forth after another speaker has spoken. The original presentation of any speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. The rebuttal presentation of any speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes.
All right. One public hearing tonight, so at this time, I'll recognize Planning Director Chris Martin, which he will come forward and present information for planning case 22-25. This is a request to rezone property at 435 Range Road from residential to residential manufactured homes and parks. Chris?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Board. Planning, we have a request from a property owner, Mr. James Kemp. He's asking to rezone property that he owns. He's asking to change the parcel from residential to residential manufactured homes and parks. Both of these zoning districts are residential-style zoning districts that allow a variety of residential uses. The difference would be that the manufactured homes and parks residential district allows manufactured home parks. Property is about six acres, and it's located on Range Road, specifically 435 Range Road. It's bounded to the south by a restricted residential and a neighborhood with mostly single-family dwellings. And then to the north, you can see in the white area on the map, it's mostly residential-style zoning with larger lots. There is currently a mobile home on the property, on the six acres, and a previous use of this property dating back to before 2010 was actually a mobile home park. There were about 10 to 12 sites on this property, and there are still a number of septic systems in the ground for the property. And this does require a public hearing. We have presented this to the planning board. They did not have a quorum, so there's no formal recommendation. There were several comments from a few of the members. Couple of the members noted that they didn't feel like it would be in harmony, while another one of the members, another member of the board felt that since it was a previous use of a mobile home park, that it would be compatible with the current use of the property. And I can answer any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Chris?
So are mobile homes not allowed in the current zone?
Mobile homes as a single use on a parcel are allowed, and the property has the ability to be subdivided into
Half acre.
Up to five acres, or, excuse me, half-acre minimum, but up to five times and be considered a minor subdivision. But if anyone would, you know, if the desire is to have more than that, then the mobile home park would be the option.
So how many could he have if it was just done residential versus how many could he have if it was a mobile home park?
Theoretically, with half-acre minimum lot size, he could have up to 11 to 12. The key is that once you exceed six, you enter into a different set of design standards that cost a lot more money for developers subdividing. So five would be the limit to stay within that minor subdivision standards, which is typically more feasible.
If they divided it for home, residential homes, how many could they put on?
Same.
Same thing?
Yeah, it'd be treated the same.
Okay.
So could you tell us again what happened at the planning board?
Three out of seven members were present, so there was no quorum.
So is that normal? Why would it not go back to the planning board?
You could direct it back.
Yeah, you could. The board could send it back to the planning board. The public hearing was set, so we have to hold the hearing. And by law, the planning board has to have an opportunity to give a recommendation and provide comment. But after 30 days, the board may, the board of commissioners has the option to hear the case or send it back.
Question always asked, is this spot zoning?
Yep. I think one would consider this spot zoning, since you're picking a district that's different.
Probably have harmony with what's already there.
Possibly. But you are picking a district that's different than the districts around. It is similar uses, but it is a different district.
All right, we're hearing none. At this time, we declare the public meeting, the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against planning case 22-25, request to rezone property at 435 Range Road from residential to residential manufactured homes and parks, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak for or against planning department case 22-25, request to rezone property at 435 Range Road from residential to residential manufactured homes and parks, please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening, Board. My name is Angela Line Weber, and I live, it was 107 Manuel Drive, but they just changed my address, to 420 Range Road. So I am effectively across the street from this proposed mobile home park. I have lived in this neighborhood since I was born. My family bought the home in 1968. So I bought the home from my family in 2000. So I've been there for quite some time. And just to let you guys know, I am here to express my grievances with creating this mobile home park. So first of all, there was a mobile home park. Mobile homes were on the property. I would not really classify it as what was a mobile home park. There were several mobile homes there. They were vacated. The homes, the land overgrew, and after becoming an eyesore for many years, they were finally demolished, finally gotten off of the property. And just to say, the person who owns this property is simply turning this into a mobile home park so that the property can be sold, and he's getting more for the land if it's sold as a mobile home park. So that's, you know, obviously can be upsetting. While mobile homes were there on a much smaller scale, it's much different than an entire mobile home park. I believe it to be indicative of the future that the property, of that property, if this project were to continue. You see long-term consequences of implementing a mobile home park, which has significantly decreased values of property in areas. Furthermore, the transient nature of tenants in mobile home parks means potential increases in crime and drug abuse. We live in the county. We do not live in the city. Therefore, there's going to be higher response times for police and emergency vehicles. We have had some problems in the past. We did have problems from that specific mobile home park area. With the transient nature, people were renting from week to week, not even month to month, and this did bring in the drug, alcohol. It was a problem. We had, I had people on my property. I actually, the reason my address changed was because I went to the planning board to have my address changed to keep people off of my property and be able to gate my driveway. So it's a problem. So the main question of the hearing is the appropriateness of the rezoning of this property. I know that spot zoning was mentioned. Obviously, it's restricted residential on my side because I'm across the street. I'm sure you're all aware of the Court Case Crimson versus Guilford County, in which you must assess the potential public benefit and the similarity of the proposed use of the property with the surrounding areas. After over 50 years in the community, I can attest that not only would this mobile home park not be to the benefit of the public, it would also clearly stick out as an eyesore and bring down property values. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this case, case 22-25?
So I really don't have a lot to say. I mean, pretty much, I'm a neighbor right beside Charlie Sykes, is my name. 415 Range Road is the property that I own, which is basically right beside of this property. I remember pretty much everything that she says, so I can't just, I mean, I can pretty much, just everything she says is the same thing I could say. The only thing that I have is, my concern is, is the property value. My property right beside of this, my biggest concern is, you know, we say a mobile home park, what kind of mobile home park are we talking about? A good mobile home park or one of the ones like some of the other ones we see out in our communities? So that would be my biggest concern. I'm not so much as against the mobile home park, it's more of what kind of mobile home park we're going to have. So I reckon that would be my biggest concern to the whole thing. And like I said, I've lived there my whole life, just like she has. I grew up there. I don't, you know, like I said, it's one of those things where I don't want to look down, you know, because it's a manufactured home or whatever, but I could see this turning into something bad for the community that is there. So I reckon that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against case 22-25? Let me read this one more time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against planning case 22-25, request to rezone property at 435 Range Road from residential to residential manufactured homes and parks, please come forward and state your name and address. All right, seeing no one else, we're going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, discussions? Any discussion that you have?
It appears to me that with spot zoning, it's not in harmony with the neighborhood, so if it's appropriate time, I'd be willing to make a motion that we deny.
I'll say it.
So I have a motion and second to deny the request, 22-25. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all of us in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a regular agenda. We're down to regular agenda. First item is the Earl Scruggs Center, Ms. Mary Beth Martin.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners. My name is Mary Beth Martin. I'm the executive director of the Earl Scruggs Center, and just thank you so much for giving me a few minutes to share some of the things that the Earl Scruggs Center is doing in our community this year. I gave you all, you all have a handout with an outline of what I'm going to talk about, and you can follow along with that. In April of this year, we collaborated with Cleveland County Schools to bring the Bluegrass Ambassadors to Cleveland County to give programs to students. The Bluegrass Ambassadors, they are professional music educators from the Chicago area who have traveled the world as cultural ambassadors with the U.S. State Department. So we were very fortunate to bring them to Cleveland County. So over the course of a week, they taught more than 1,000 students about the roots of Cleveland County music and how they connect to music around the world. They included the significant impacts of Cleveland County's musicians on the genres of bluegrass, with Mr. Scruggs, country, and of course, blues music. The program was so well-received that Cleveland County Schools has asked us to bring it back in 2023, and so we're really excited to do that April 17 through 23 of 2023. So that was a wonderful program. We were really excited to offer that to the Cleveland County students. This year, we also presented the Center Stage Concert Series, and it included seven concerts from February to August. During that series, which some of you may have attended, we brought in regionally and nationally-known artists to the Great Hall, which is a wonderful and intimate concert space at the Earl Scruggs Center. And our series featured multiple IBMA, which is International Bluegrass Music Association, award winners, Grammy nominees, and even a Grammy winner. Out of those seven shows, we had four sold-out shows, and we saw many out-of-town attendees. In fact, we had folks travel in from the Charlotte region, upstate South Carolina, to attend all seven of our shows. And so through this concert series, the Earl Scruggs Center has earned a reputation for presenting high-quality music programs, and we expect that we'll gain notoriety and receive more out-of-community attendees next year. And so we're excited to start working on that concert series. We've also focused this year on getting Cleveland County history out into the community. Of course, we focus, we have that at the Earl Scruggs Center. You can come in and you can see those exhibits, and you can learn about Cleveland County history. But we've been putting together traveling exhibits that have actually been touring the community. In January, we collaborated with Gardner Web University's Dover Library and their university archives to curate Bound by Faith: Bibles of Cleveland County. And that features bibles from the Cleveland County Historical Collection, as well as documents from the university archives at Gardner Web. And basically, this exhibit talks about how bibles have been used throughout our county's history. It was open in the Tucker Student Center at Gardner Web University for the first quarter of the year, and then it opened at the Kings Mountain Historical Museum. Last year, our curator Zach Dressel and Earl Scruggs Center Board Member Chavis Gash co-curated the exhibit Redefining Builders: The African-American Communities of Cleveland County, and it was displayed in our Special Exhibits Gallery in the fall of 2021. In 2022, that exhibit has been traveling the community, and it has been displayed at the Eugenia Young Memorial Library, the Cleveland County Chamber, and it's been at Holly Oak Park this summer. We're really excited that this month is going to Shelby High School to be displayed in the media center, and then it'll also be traveling to Crest, Burns, and Kings Mountain High Schools. High School. So, we're really glad to get this exhibit into the high schools. We have another opportunity for Cleveland County residents to learn about our history through the new special exhibit that's coming this month that we're really excited about. It's called Cleveland County in Focus: The Photography of Ellis Studio. Some of you might remember the Ellis Studio and Mr. Forrest Ellis and his decades-long career in photography in Cleveland County. In addition to documenting people's important events such as weddings and things like that, he also documented life in our county. And so, the exhibit will include iconic images of places in Uptown Shelby, things like the Cleveland County Fair, some athletes that you might remember, and more. And these photos are from the 1950s. So, they're taken from negatives that are in the Cleveland County Historical Collection. We digitized them, and now we're printing them and putting them on display. And they give us a really good picture of what life in Cleveland County looked like in the 1950s. And so, I'd like to invite you all to a special event, a Coffee with the Curator event, on October 19th at 10:30 a.m. for a look at that exhibit with our curator. Things are about to get really busy, as if they haven't been busy enough at the Scruggs Center. Beginning tomorrow, we will begin hosting all Cleveland County 4th graders on field trips. So, about 1,000 students over the next month will come through our doors, and we're really excited about it. For each of these visits, students will participate in an exhibit scavenger hunt where they go through our exhibits, and they learn about Mr. Scruggs, and they learn about Cleveland County history. And then they also learn about our music and our culture with special programs from artists like Darren and Brooke Aldridge, the Foreign Landers, or local storyteller Clyde Buckner. There is a lot more going on at the Earl Scruggs Center, but I did want to focus on some of the things that we're doing in the community. There are other things I can tell you about, but I do want to close by sharing that we continue to work really hard to spread the good word about Cleveland County and all that's happening here. These efforts are paying off, and I have a few examples for you that I'd like to share. During the run of our Avet Brothers exhibit, which just closed, which just closed in September, we saw visitors come from all over the region just to see that exhibit, and then they see Shelby and this community and everything we have to offer. We met one couple who traveled all the way from Cincinnati because they wanted to see this exhibit, but they chose to spend a weekend here in Cleveland County. So, they stayed here, they ate in our restaurants, they went shopping in our community. They, you know, said that it was a wonderful community, and they'd come back and visit, and not just for an exhibit. On one recent weekend, we saw visitors at the Earl Scruggs Center from 14 states and the country of New Zealand. And that's not unusual. We've been written about in publications all over the region, and just a few months ago, we were featured in the Wall Street Journal as a must-see stop in western North Carolina. So, I'm here to say thank you so much for all the ways that you support the Earl Scruggs Center. We're always delighted when you walk through our doors and you attend a program or visit the museum. And of course, if you ever have any questions, my contact information's here. You're just welcome to give me a call.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. There were some impressive stats there. Thank you very much for that. Commissioners, anybody else have any questions or comments?
Just thank you for what you do.
Yeah, you do a great job with the everyday hands-on organization of making things work. So, we appreciate it, and we're proud to have Earl Scruggs as part of our community and something we can look back on as, as something good from our county. But do you have any idea, what is the percentage of Cleveland County people versus out-of-town people that, on an average yearly basis?
So, in recent stats that we were compiling for, for a, for a publication of destination Cleveland County, we saw we were having 90% of out-of, out-of-county visitors to the Earl Scruggs Center, or 90% of our visitors from out-of-county.
It may be a well-kept secret in the county.
And we hope exhibit, like getting our traveling exhibits out to the community in this very Cleveland County-focused exhibit will, will help bring more Cleveland County folks and make them aware of what we offer at the Earl Scruggs Center.
Anybody else?
I did have the opportunity to see the African-American Communities exhibit, and it was very, very interesting. Some of the people who built, actually built our county. So, that was an awesome exhibit, and I'm glad they're traveling it around.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Performance Measurement System. Jill Stelchak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, members of the board. Today, I'm excited to talk to you about some things going on internally in the organization with the Cleveland County Performance Management System. Really, what I'd like to talk to you all today about is really understanding why we're working through this measurement system, really the timeline of how we got here, the Cleveland County model that we've been implementing, and the long-term plans to unveil this to, throughout the organization and throughout the community. Really understanding why, why we're implementing high performance, and why we're implementing performance measurement systems is really one of our values as an organization is high performance in an effort to make our community better. The organization identified that value, being able to track real-time how we're providing services and the most effective uses of those services. Really, it's an industry best practice throughout counties across the nation, especially here in North Carolina. Counties are measuring how they're performing, where funds are being allocated and performance being utilized, again, for those most efficient and effective services. Here in Cleveland County, we've tried to capitalize on that by creating the narrative, really focusing on what we're doing and that we do very well, and understanding that there are a lot of things here that we want to promote and showcase to our citizens, and as well as providing a real-time reporting, understanding and keeping a pulse on the organization, keeping understand, understanding where things are moving, that we can appropriately allocate those resources at that time. Really, how did we get here is looking through that dedicated investment here from you all at the Board of Commissioners, really focusing in on 2014 with the initial assessment of the Commissioners' focus areas. That document sets the, the plan for how the, how the organization is going to provide funding resources, as well as set the strategic vision for the organization, thus allowing us to identify some technology improvement areas, such as the Keystone System, really, this, this was a pivotal event in the timeline of dedicated investment, really shifting from an AS400 DOS-based system to more real-time internet-based software, as well as some organizational restructuring, thus allowing us to be, have a more lean model of efficiency and organizational structure. And in 2019, identifying that Cleveland County purpose of making our community better and the, and our five values that we use to say that we make our community better. This aligns with our, with the Commissioners' focus areas and really understands that this is why we do it, and this is how we do it. And today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what we do and how we promote it through our organizational performance bonus system, and again, looking at software improvement, such as things like electronic timekeeping. Really understanding the, the role of high performance, it's a, it's a culture-based system, starting from, from the direction from you all here at the board with the strategic planning efforts that you all identify each year with your focus areas. Those focus areas are really set direction for staff to implement and from policy execution, performance management. And over the last few years, we've, that dedicated, the dedication of systems that you all have directed staff have allowed us to transition the culture here in Cleveland County from, if it's not broke, don't fix it, to a, to a performance-based outcomes and providing real-time reporting and to be most efficient. This has been bought in throughout our entire organization, thus stemming to a great culture that we all have here for employees throughout the county. This system's investment is really looking in three areas of technology, people, and operations. Really, these are the, the systems that we've invested in for the last two years, really kind of showcasing that we've been able to, with that timeline and direction of the board, really been able to change the culture here through that dedicated investment that you all have provided here over the last few years. And the current model of what we've, what we've been doing as a performance management system, in 2020, we unveiled the Cleveland County Performance Management Model, looking at six organizational metrics of wellness costs, full-time employee headcount, training, talent retention, customer service, and wellness activities. These six metrics are areas throughout the organization that we have cost avoidance, that we're able to reinvest into our organization to employees in form of a performance bonus that is paid in September and March, up to 3% annually, so 1.5% in September, 1.5% in March. Really, this allows us to see substantial buy-in throughout the organization. It also generates a significant amount of return that we're able to reallocate for other areas as well, and thus provides a very lean model and showing that we're able to do more with less. And the organization has very much bought into that, and it's been a great use of, of funding. Over the next few years, especially what I'm here to talk to you all about today is the transition of that performance management model from the organizational, that has been great success over the last three years, to departmental level and at the individual level. So, looking at that transition to departmental level, looking across the state of North Carolina, there are six counties that offer a departmental performance model system that directly promotes to the public. Just as a quick synopsis, some of these include Mecklenburg, Wake County, Alamance County, Stanley, Cumberland. There are many other counties in North Carolina that have budget and performance departments, but not necessarily all of those are public-facing. The goal with this long-term is promote this from a, from a public standpoint, really wanting to show to you all here, there's a lot of things that we're doing here that we're, we identify as peers with these other communities, and these are things that are, we're trying, we're making sure we make the incremental steps to do that and be as part of those peers. Really, as this timeline rolls out, this is really as, as an update to what's going, some good things going on here in the organization, looking over the next few months, meeting with those departments to identify those performance metrics, keeping in the same tune with the organizational performance bonus and performance metrics, and looking at these cost avoidance that we were able to reallocate throughout the organization. This has been kicked off with some pilot departments here, internally identifying metrics at the LaGrand Center, Communications Department, and Health Department. Over the next few months, we'll be meeting and finalizing those, those metrics with other departments throughout the organization and having a document for you all at your FY '24 budget hearing. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Just a comment, appreciate the hard work you do here and part of the, I feel like a really good team.
Thanks, Senator.
Brian, anything you want to add?
Just, I think that this, the momentum that's been built to be outcome-driven and measured in all things that we do is really supportive of the high-performance model, which we all know is a best practice from, not only the government, but the Institute of Excellence at the national level. So, we're, I think it's, I think it's, it's a way of really documenting a lot of the hard work and measuring where we're trying to get, and that's been a very intentional effort. I think that, as Jeff said, at an organizational level, it's been something that's really been embraced by our employees, and I'm excited about as we transition to the departmental level, you know, what those outcomes look like. Jeff, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is board appointments. The first board that will handle appointments for tonight is the Cleveland County Animal Service Advisory Board. Madam Clerk?
Board, you have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you will need to appoint two people for a three-year term set to expire December 31st, 2025. You will need to appoint one person who is either with the Wildlife Commission or the NC Co-op, and the second person will be to need somebody who is active in a animal rescue.
Mr. Chair, I would like to appoint Greg Traywick and Margaret Watson.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next board we'll handle tonight is the Cleveland County Nursing Home Advisory Committee. Madam Clerk?
You will need to appoint two people for an initial one-year term set to expire June 30th, 2023.
Mr. Chair, I'll nominate Linda Putnam and Donna Buies.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all of us in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next board we'll handle tonight is the Ruby C. Hunt YMCA Library Board. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. You have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you will need to appoint one person to serve a three-year, I'm sorry, appoint one person whose term is going to expire December 31st, 2023.
I'm going to make a motion. We appoint Ashley Francis.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all of us in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. This time, Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Well, Cleveland County Fair is going on, one of the biggest events in the, in the county. Invite everybody out this week.
And, and nobody can say it's too hot or too cold. It's been really good.
That's right. I should have said Cleveland County Agriculture Fair. I'm sorry.
Brian, anybody from staff, anything?
No, sir.
All right, hearing none, I entertain a motion to recess to reconvene, and next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, at 7:30 a.m., and this is at the Cleveland County Health Department, located at 200 South Post Road. And this will be for the Commissioners to discuss, have a discussion regarding the Board's role as the Board of Health.
So, moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? If not, all of us in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. All right, we're in recess until October 13th, 2022, at 7:30.